And I'll read our participation. The House Select Board welcomes everyone to its meeting and all public meetings of the town of Hattville. Our resident special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hattville shall be open to the public and shall come to one, two, the open meeting live executive session proposed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of Commonwealth Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the opening meeting law supports Hattville's listening to the proceedings, but not necessarily participate during meetings of the select board and in Hattville we may define a bound between hearing from members of the community conducting the required business of the Hattville Select Board. For tonight's meeting, we are not being TV recorded. So with that said, announcements. Well, the announcements are this weekend. Well, first, I want to thank everybody that attended Flag Day and a special thank you to Captain Luke Longstreet for being there with the Power Department to help us retire the flag. So I want to make sure I make that announcement. Cooling Center was downstairs for folks and that may continue for people who are in the chairs. There is a voluntary water ban and Saturday's concert will be Saturday, not Friday, and that's sponsored by the Cultural Council on this one. So it's Saturday at six eight, Friday, and then, and that's all I have. Do you guys have any?
Okay.
Okay, with that being said, anybody here for public forum? And with that being said, make a motion on, do I have a motion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the June tenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes.
Second. Who made motion? Second, any discussion? I'm favor, like, motion carries. Topic one will be West Street, which everybody's interested in. We have a punch list of items.
Mr. Karen, just a quick verification. We did post this as being at five forty-five. I don't know if you want to take any other any case.
My mistake. We're waiting to give anybody else that wants to be here. Then I'll go to topic two, appointments or resignations. We do an annual point, so everybody should have their packets, a listing of appointments, and with that in your packet, there is a motion that if my colleagues are happy with the appointment, they, so just a one big motion for them, or according to the, yeah, open one.
I think that we reappoint all appointees with terms expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. It's presented on the annual appointment list supplied by the town.
Motion made. Well, we can second any discussion. I'm a favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Topic three, you should have a new packet, Mass DOT Bridge Inspection Standards. This is in relation to the Maple Street Mill River Bridge and it's helping two axle twenty tons, three axle twenty-five tons, and type three is two five axle thirty-six tons. And I believe those are the ratings and it's, this is mostly.
This is just your information. This is a standard state inspection that came in. If you want, you'd have it direct to the, it's still changed.
Okay, so a little too, and once you have, you guys have any questions on that topic? Topic four is wage adjustment. So Andrew, do you want to?
Yes, and this is listed both in number four and number six, which is no problem at all, but wanted to just present these to you. So this is in line with the town's budget that was just approved. We have some changes that are being made, some compensation. It all begins with, we have a, this is exciting for retirement. Karen Geraskey from our Town Clerk's office, she is our Assistant Town Clerk, and she's retiring effective on Monday. The town obviously thanks her for all the service. It's great to have her here. She, so about the vacancy in that position, which is going to be filled internally by Lori Picard, who is our Administrative Assistant, working mostly with the Planning, Board, and Conservation Commission. We found that there's enough time for schedule that she'll be able to fill both the Assistant Planner position, Assistant Town Clerk position, and that administrative position as well. So the Town Clerk's office had bargained for somewhat higher compensation for that position, Town Clerk's office, so we'd like her compensation in the Administrative Assistant position to match that with the Assistant Town Clerk position. So it would be a slight increase there, and that matches her responsibilities. You have a form from the Town Clerk, that will, with the official hire form there, and you also have a wage increase for her administrative responsibilities. Given that she'll be doing those responsibilities, I think that that will be some, in some ways, some extra answering questions for some of the things that she handles for Karen Geraskey or Executive Assistant. Karen has also, after another excellent valuation in line for a merit increase that's budgeted in the Town Administrative Budget, so that would give her an increase as well and also reflect her new responsibilities. And then we have another form for Isabella De Geer, our Planning Board Assistant Planner. Ella was budgeted for four hours for both the Conservation Commission and Planning Board. She also will be staffing that office when Lori's not here. She's going to be working on Monday afternoons so that the Planning Office will always be staffed, which is great during work hours. And this would bring her to a permanent part-time position rather than a, that's part-time position, which will be moving from thirteen hours to twenty-four hours.
Would that be benefit?
It would benefit, yeah, which is why it's time to find out.
Okay, well, I'm going to go backwards now. Lori's going to be splitting her time between these two positions.
That's correct. Yeah, so her schedule is the same as Karen Geraskey's, which is Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, twelve thirty to four thirty as the Assistant Town Clerk. And then the other hours, she'll be in the planning office. Yeah, it's just different.
Anybody have any questions on Karen? Anybody have any question?
What are the other hours that she works in the table?
Yeah, Bella's going to work basically Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, eight hours a day.
And the last one, the?
I don't know. Has not received a merit increase in a long time from what I can tell. Very healthy budget line under HCTV, their enterprise account there, and I will bring him in line with other folks to this position. Plus, he's been managing this whole studio, so he's got a lot of his time and work. So, but the merit increases in line and budget.
Anybody have any question on, anything that's, annoying you or disturbing you or?
I mean, it's right on the very same.
Can I make this in one motion on full group or?
I would say why not?
Or do I have a motion on next group?
I'll make a motion to approve the wage salary rate adjustment request for Administrative Assistant, Executive Assistant, Assistant Planner at HCTV.
Second.
Motion made. Motion, second, any discussion? I'm a favor, that kind of motion carries. Still not quite at five forty-five, so how many can we create here? We'll go to the, do we have anything on the water sewer rate?
Just a quick update for you. So DPC Engineering has been reviewing our water sewer rates. They're going to be our model for us for setting those rates. They would like to have a small workshop with, from the Finance Committee and our PDW staff, and then someone from the Select Board, and that will be held at the virtual meeting on July eighth at nine AM. We will review with them, make sure that they're on the right track, and as long as that small versus an agreement, we will post a public hearing for your next Select Board meeting July fifteenth, at which time we will hear from the public, present the rates, and then approve them, as long as you feel comfortable with that. We can post, you know, their recommendations, their, their, their plan for their rates in advance so residents can review, put it up for normal channels, and that can be, we'll post it as a public hearing and have that reviewed by the public and put on. So if that schedule sounds good to all of you, I would just ask, who would like to be the representative at that meeting? Of course, hope that all of you can be there, just because only one person can speak to the rate. I would be fine with that.
Okay.
And if you want to attend, you got to say candidate. I will set that calendar by all of you. That's July eighth, nine AM.
You said virtual?
Yes.
Continue with the Finance Committee, six thirty.
Yeah. So I have a couple of quick updates, if you like.
Five does, so we just talk about those.
No, there's no need for most of the team members, because we don't have rates yet. I was hopeful we might have something, but people need to have a public hearing, have any, so I'll make sure that that's validated next. And they build in October, but it's good to do it as soon as possible because residents will be, are using the water now that they'll be billed for in October, because you know the rates.
Well, the town has had a history of being behind, saying the water rate based on what it's been costing us fairly closely and stuff, so we've been trying to get ahead of the ball, and there was some suggestion of having possibly a small increase each year to stay within instead of waiting a few years to have a big increase. That's been the topic of discussion over the years. We did a rate increase a little while back to bring up the rates so that we could get the USDA loan with the water treatment plan, and so that USDA actually said you have to have budgeted in order to prove to us you can pay for the loans. That's why the setting was, we'll have this meeting, you'll be in discussion with DPC and the whole guys, and we'll see where we go from there. And then we'll also have an open hearing.
I have a couple more updates on my end, if that's helpful, and then we can jump into a hearing, which should be there. I have a conference I'll be attending tomorrow, Small Town Administrators Association of Massachusetts will be meeting, so I'll attend that. Boilston, which is a perfect drive, I realized, and when I said I would go, but that's fine. All right. Sure looks great. It's an excellent network of people to get to learn from, so we'll be here while the administrative staff are right now, and hopefully bring back some, more dollars for us. Want to quickly update you on some of the projects that were approved at town meeting, where we lie on those right now. So for the Roof and Boilers project, because that project, Roof especially, is currently quoted at over one point five million dollars, we're following the state's law, but in this case really, it's on the line for innovation of hiring an owner's project manager, so we've just completed the bid process for that, and we are in the final stages of reviewing applications from the project managers. And those will be, it will be, we'll have one select by the end of this week for doing interviews of two top finalists. We have five really excellent proposals all come in, so we're evaluating those. We're almost done and want to choice those. What we're really looking for their help with on the Boiler project is just reviewing our, our bid specs to making sure that our plan for the boilers makes sense, that we're taking advantage of any state tax credits or anything that's out there for, for projects, and considering anything else around environmental regulations or anything else that we need to be doing. So having their help as a group that works across the state and coping these things is useful. Same kind of thing for the roof, just making sure that we're putting the, the project fit together the right way, because right now we have a bit of a turnover. EPW makes sense to be getting some help, so we're excited to be doing that. And then they manage the project all day, which should be useful. We're working on both the, the bid documents for the boilers and the roof so that that can be reviewed and moved on quickly by the, okay, when they come in. Everything in hearings that we will need some, some work on, on, on designing for the roof, which makes a lot of sense, we want to make sure that we're doing that properly. And that will be really the first step, so just getting an architect designer on board. And then, once they're on board, they'll do the design pretty quickly, and then we'll be able to get construction about three weeks ago. So that roof project, as much as we'd like to do, as fast as possible, is probably, most likely going to happen as soon as school is out next year. So that's really.
Well, if we need to get them on board after selection, we could always have a meeting to address that one, sort of, give, give a contract, sort of, time.
Yeah.
You know, one, one day, just finding the time.
Yeah, that would be great.
Meeting on that, if we be.
I can continue on the other projects after five forty-five.
I don't see a way to get it done sooner than that with the, with the cost and everything
else, because of all, just with the amount that the early quotes came down to.
The problem with the boiler is it could be, boiler leaves out, once you, once you select the company, the boilers, there could be a ten week, we break that according to one individual.
But I will say, boilers, we're going to try to get it done, this is, we're going to push ours on. Let's go work on that.
It depends on, these are not, you know, on the shell.
Right, right.
Type of thing, you know. And we don't know about, I guess the tariffs may be impacting some of the parts, and it may not, so we don't know that either. I'm willing to bet first time. But the roof, it will take until twenty twenty-six. And hopefully, when the kids are gone next summer, we can get that roof done. And also try to analyze what happened, why did that roof leak, because it should have been for at least twenty-five years.
Right.
So there's got to be a reason behind what, what happened, and where was it failed. We'll see.
Yeah, and, and the early stoke scene too for the roof, it's also to, as soon as possible, make any fixes that they can for installation, they can temporarily get us through the thing. So hopefully, once they put some in that, they might have some good ideas there. Correct.
Okay, everybody's here for, we're having a hearing at five and ten. The purpose of this hearing, we had invited the contractor and the engineer. I don't think either one is present. So the purpose was to go over our punch list, so what I'd like to do is go over our punch list first, and then if there's anything we're missing, then you folks can let us know, and we will get back to the engineer and the contractor and see what's happening there. So this way, we'll go through each item, and the first item on our punch list, and then you can tell us afterward if we got it right or were wrong. On our punch list, there's gravel grading in the field where lay down took place, it has to be brought back to original condition. That's the first item. Cack basin on the well entry road needs to be cleaned, inspected, including pipe to state trained line and raised to grade height to match up with property of butter's lawn grade to facilitate drainage as it was. This was pushed down in elevation from heavy equipment. Roadway repairs to well, first part from Route five to just past the lay down area, where there is still standing water, need to be dug down to the road face installed many years ago and replaced with hard pack. Other areas of road need to have potholes fixed and some are extensive. This also includes restoring right away road, which was expanded during construction and narrowing it to the original sixteen foot width and repairing of butter's yards. The original blacktop area from Route five apron needs to be restored. Lay down area where material stored needs to be cleaned of trash, materials pushed into standing water area, remove millings, backfill gravel, possible subsoil or other ideal for drainage before a loma is pushed back down over area as a pre-louted area and the drainage is now an issue. Piles of fill are in the road further away from lay down area and need to be removed. The pump station does not seem to be fully completed. The bollards are not sleeved and reflected material has not been installed. There are dips in the pavement from trenches in the road that we believe Mass DOT will be addressing separately, because the highway is Mass DOT. There are dips in the shoulder off the road as well. The drain gate in front of number forty-seven is full of excavation material and it needs to be cleared. There was a sinkhole at access row at number nut forty-nine, which signals there may be a greater issue. Thirty-eight West Street installed new curb box top missing cover as the top is broken. The town needs asphalt plans for water and sewer, bull sheets not eight by eleven printed with at least three copies and PDF of signed plans. All main line valve boxes need to be opened and cleaned due to recent blacktop covers and, and valve box blown out of any debris. We have concerns there are similar system leaks, the pump station repaired to be full. We opened some manholes and found that they're full and can't see the exit line, signaling it's all full of groundwater. All this indicates that water is leaking from one of the pipes. Residents were concerned that some of the loming and seeding was not completed properly. There may be also other issues as, so this should not be viewed as an exhaustive list. We have invited you, the residents, at this meeting to find out if you have any other concerns before the work is considered completed. We are inviting you to attend this meeting as well. And now, before I open up to you, do my colleagues have any comments on this?
No. My only thing is specifically to the trenches that are sinking on the northbound lane, DLT is aware of it, and it's an issue that they're going to be addressing directly. It's a, kind of above our purview. Been being aware of it, I've been in conversations with the head construction guy, engineer, he's aware of it, and they've got, they're taking care of things on there, and so that is being addressed. They're trying to figure out what is the, what is the answer, how intrusive is it going to be?
Okay, do you have any other items that you would like us to, yeah, why don't you come up and, or just talk to me? We don't have any further comments.
I'm just, I'm just wondering from everything you said, if my driveway is included in that, because when they put down the water, that break down the part of the driveway? And they patched it after they pulled, they pulled it out, and said that they would be doing a correct, a correct job when everything was completed, but no one's ever come.
Oh, all right. What house over?
Fifty-eight West Street. I see they did the roads, but they don't.
They came through, they did repair some aprons, but if they missed here, we'll make sure that it's taken care of.
They didn't do anything since they originally put in one, put water out. Whatever they did, it's, I would not consider.
We're thirty-two West Street, machine shop where the lift stations been moved to, and we don't have lateral, and we've approached Yeller a couple times, and we received a print from the town administrator, the former town administrator, and there seems to be a discrepancy in the elevation on both of these tanks. One is a lot higher than the other. We surveyed the other tanks in town and they're all the same level. I don't know why this one is higher than the other one, it's affecting our driveway, and we have not found our lateral to hook up to. I'd like to see if the town could look into that. They, they did say that they have to work outside the easement area, which was never intended to have a tank in it to match our driveway, otherwise our driveway is going to be paved with a hump in it, and it's going to be at an angle skewed for the driveway. So Mr. Ryan Yeller had asked if he could go over the easement area to straighten it out. That's a problem though, because that tank elevation is too high. It's about eight inches higher. I work for other contractors, I can survey it and give you the heights if you would like, but it looks like it's going to be a problem on our driveway, and we don't have lateral. We tried to get it twice, and they said they didn't have a working permit for it, and so we got it from Marlene, town administrator, and it, it doesn't fit what's there now, the print that I have. We went back to Marlene, and she's, she checked with Michael Hall, and he said there's been no upgrades, and that is the correct print, and I have that print, the town has it, and it doesn't match what's there. I'd like to look into that if they could.
Wait, fifty-eight West Street?
Thirty-two. Yeah.
Anybody else? Yes.
One oh four West Street. Who is responsible for the apron, the driveway apron being a little elevated over the roadway at this point? I mean, I know that the last time they paved that road, they put in a driveway apron that had a little hump in it so that I wouldn't get all the roadway drainage down my driveway, and that hasn't been changed, and it no longer protects the driveway from the roadway rain. But that is my main issue. The embankment, north and south of my driveway, has been compromised, especially north of the driveway where they put in the easement for the sewage. They, that hasn't been graded out yet or reseeded. It was, and I had one of those pretty black aprons along the roadway that's supposed to protect the woodlands from sludge, I guess, and it's still there, and imagine, I just, I was assuming that they would be picking that up, but since we're getting towards the end of this project, I'm, want to make sure that they come and take that up.
The staging area behind fifty-seven West Street looks good at three o'clock this afternoon. There's still two, two big mounds of roots or limbs or something with lots of weeds and grass going, and it's been so long, I don't remember if those were there before they started this whole project or not. So I'm not sure why those weren't taken out, but the rest of it is, it is.
In regards to, yeah, I took a drive out there myself, and there's still some chunks of blacktop and stuff along the road, and some other stone debris and stuff like that that needs to, but the piles were, want to pick up and bring them up. It does look like they seeded it already.
Yeah.
What's that? Yeah, 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 it's just, I mean, they started doing it, they just haven't completed that task fully.
They, they have planned to have, clean that lay down.
Yeah, that's not, that means, yeah, it's not, it's not done in a second.
Yeah, it's not, it's not done in a second.
Okay, eighty one West Street. Um, so.
What property was that?
In front of my house, they finished that quite a while ago, but uh, there's a last. Yeah, sorry, eighty one. Um, but there's a bunch of silicate that got left on the south end of the property where the ditch is. And that ditch head wall is also being eroded over time because of water going into it. And the head wall is actually quite exposed. I do have a picture if you want to see it. Um, and then. When they put the soil down on my property and then hydro seeded it, it rained like for two days afterwards. And a lot of that washed away because my property kind of took towards my house. So there's a lot of uh. Rough spots for some hard ground stuff. I would like to have some soil dump and spread out. They don't need to dig it all out. And then across the street, there used to be a sign in that area that's turned into a kind of parking area. That is to notify people there's a current coming up ahead and that's fine. It wasn't my issue at this time.
Anybody else have that same issue with the hydro seed?
Fifty eight West Street, we, we, well, we got that, we had torrential rains within twenty four hours of that one. So it's, it, it just looks like a bunch of crab, half crabgrass. You know, with a lot of spacing, what it looks like.
They wasn't packed down at all. They just kind of threw the soil down. I mean, somebody going down on my driveway threw it. And the tire tracks were like six inches deep. Yeah. So they, they really did a lot of the job on uh. On that piece of it. They also, I had showed thirty five West Street, I had showed them pictures because I had excavators on my front lawn going way back towards the house. And when they took up most of the dirt and put the lawn down. But they didn't go far enough, so I have between my lawn and between what they laid, I have this whole little. Walkway between the two of dirt and. Nothing much, so they didn't go far enough with the seeding and the lawn. Which, your house over thirty five. And just one other thing, the mailbox, the group mailbox that's across the street from my house, so I guess it's. I don't know what number it is, but it's right across the street thirty five to thirty seven West Street. There are holes where, you know, you pull up to it with your car and you get your mail. Now there are holes there, so it's hard for cars to. Get around it. They just filled all the holes. There's um.
We're just going to hang your chat, chat, comments for any go first, all right? I'm, I'm good. We've got camera, we've got video, we're recording.
Built that? Okay, um, it's not in front of my house. I think it's in front of thirty seven Jade, uh, fifteen, uh, Kaden. Um, their house, there's a sinkhole right in front of. Um, it's right next to the sewer cap. And it's pretty deep and it's right next to the pavement. And somebody could really sit like a, like a bicycle or somebody. You know, their foot goes down or something. Um, David, who's right here, so I, I noticed they were having it and they also have this one.
But there's been a lot, very terrible job on the landscape. Recording what I'm hearing, I, I did drive through there and see in the lip rock. I think it's, they just put a bucket and threw some dirt out there and laid it down.
It was a level. It was useless. Didn't even come out. They didn't like pack it down once they laid it all and the hydro seedings seemed to be heavy in some spots. Light to non existent in others.
So that sinkhole, do you know which house attacked? Cause we're aware of one at forty nine. It's about a foot off the roadway and we spray painted it.
This is thirty seven.
Thirty seven.
It's right next to the sinkhole. They also, and I don't know that this was them, but I surmise that it might have been. I was leaving for work a couple of weeks ago on a Monday morning. And they were doing the lung in my driveway, so the truck, the big dump truck was there and then what is it, tobacco? With the old thing that I hope. Um, was taking lung that and putting it on and they had to move the truck. I left, I went to work. And when I came home that night. Something had ripped my cable wires off the pole. And they were circled very nicely in my driveway. So somebody knew that it was and it took me. Five days to get them to come out and fix it. And I can only guess that that shovel thing hit the wire and pulled it off. And I kept meaning to call the office and. Just to ask if anyone was aware of what happened, but I have a feeling it was. It was their tackle. So just mentioning it and since been repaired and all, but um. But I'm sure some nice person coiled it very.
Besides the landscape, I think the sinkhole and the elevation level, is there anything else?
Um, what control does the town have except this project?
Well, the control we have right now is not adding to contract.
Okay.
And if we're.
So there is issues that may be addressed.
We read our punctual list.
Yes.
We're adding your comments to our punctual list.
Okay.
And we're going back to the contractor and we're not making final payment. Okay, I think we're allowed to move back for five percent.
Five percent of your payment, yeah, I got that.
Yeah.
We're hoping back then till we're satisfied.
Excellent.
And that's basically on any project, that's the only page you have.
Yeah. Will we get a response back from these issues?
While we are aiming that the contractor will get back.
Oh, okay. Individually or will we have a tough meeting?
Well, once, once we go back with the contractor and he gives us some kind of timeline.
Okay.
Then we'll get back.
See the town administrator?
So maybe the best thing is uh, when the contractors and everything was addressed. And we could have you guys back and you can say if they are telling us the truth or not.
Okay. Yeah, we had trouble with Geller. We went to his business. He refused to show the prints for the lift station. He said his farm foreman had the prints. When his foreman showed up, he said he didn't have the prints. And then of course, we approached him with the prints we got from Marlene, the town administrator. And they didn't comply with what they had put in. And he said that wasn't the print he was working on. But he would not show us his current print. We went back to Marlene and she checked with Michael Old as I had said. And he said, this is the print. Nothing's been changed. So that's my issue, my question.
Yes, Michael's saying that's the print and it doesn't match up to the print that the contractor didn't install and.
Right, okay, okay. Yeah, I was just wondering if we'll get a follow up somehow.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's one issue. We'll ask Michael Old saying.
Okay.
You, you had a print that showed one elevation. And you measured it and it's a different elevation. Can you, can you address it why?
Right.
Why it wasn't installed according to what the print said?
Yeah, okay, thanks, Ed.
I just have one question for one oh four. You're looking to have the hump put back into your apron as it was previously?
Yeah, I mean, I. Yeah, part of it's there, but I don't, I don't know why. It could have been just usage over the, it's been what, twenty years since it was repaved last time? The five was repaved, but at that time I went out and asked the contractor. What's going to keep the water from just drainage down my driveway because it's a gravel driveway and I don't want it washing away. And he said they were going to build up a little. Buffer and that buffer doesn't exist as, it only exists on half the driveway. So I don't know that apron, but. North of the driveway where they put in the access line for the sewer. They never came back and did anything about that. And I realize that my, I don't have a lawn is, is such, so they may not have considered this. But I'm getting. Drainage, leachy, leaching drainage, what do you call it? Whenever it runs down, when it runs down the roadside and causes the well galling.
Yep.
Yeah, so I, I would like it to be regraded and reseeded. And then that pretty curtain of plastic there.
Yeah, they still come.
I mean, I could recycle it, but it'd be cheaper if they did.
I just have a quick curiosity question and this is from something that happened, I think it was over a year ago. But I never heard anything back from it. When they did the gas name. And um. And I had to spend the, the night away from my house while they walked through during the night in the gas heater. Um, there was supposed to be some sort of investigation by Berkshire Gas and stuff.
Yes, we never, we've never received anything to say who was at fault. There was two issues with that. One was that the gas company failed to mark the location. And the contractor. W as, he thought there was nothing there because it wasn't marked properly. Or the other issue was they marked it in the contractor. So I don't know if it's a litigation between both, but I don't believe we've ever received anything. We've requested, we've asked for it a couple of times.
So is it still ongoing?
Uh, so I guess that it's still ongoing unless they're supposed to issue report. So maybe. I just have the title, you know, all, all we can do is ask and, and hopefully get one. Actually, I don't need to follow one since I've got an report because we have asked a couple of times what happened. So all I can think of, all I can think of what happened, but I don't want to publicly.
I can think of something too.
We contacted the engineer for Berkshire and we were given the runaround because we lost a day's work. And so the business takes us and they just ignored us. So basically what it comes down to, if you want to spend money to go after somebody. And they hope you're not going to spend any money, go after them. So they're going to drag your feet and you won't get an answer. Because that's how they operate. Because in this meeting, we had somebody from the gas company and you said, just submit what your loss was. It was a sham. It's a waste of our time. Because they ignore us and you won't get no answer either. You don't have the power.
It has to cross the counter, so.
We've had uh, J S Ray come in and they had to replace the six inch line which they put the lift station on top of. Within four feet. And they have to replace it. Now they were looking at the ore under the bridge to move the line into the road. Because the lift station's in the wrong spot. They went further to the district two and that bridge is not on a foundation. So it had to have pilings driven because that whole area is soft. And there's no foundation there. So now they can't drill under the bridge. So now they're looking, I've been talking to the engineer. And they're having trouble moving the six inch line. And when they moved the six, the state now is requiring them to move the twelve inch off the bridge also, which. Michael Old and Geller put the gas via wastewater line. Right where they are, where they're supposed to go. So now there's a conflict there that you don't realize. You probably won't even hear about it. But all utilities collated right at our driveway. We told them before not to put it there. It was congested. We had transformers that are ignition sources for gases that are formed in a lift station. Lift stations are considered a hazardous location and should be treated as such. They went ahead anyway. They violated the no go zone and went right on top of the gas lines. Now there's a controversy with the gas company. I don't know what's going to come of that because they don't call us back. But we don't really care. But there was a restaurant next door that had a legitimate reason not to have those gases there. And now it's in a dangerous area and the town is going to be left with a, a deep, deep system that may or may not work. The town people that work here said, we can't maintain this. It's too deep. This should have went shallow and had a chance to be moved up the street and go shallower. I'm not going to hook up until I have a problem. If somebody hooks up and it fails, whose responsibility is that? Because this pipe has moved, they patched it, they had cave ins. Uh, this was never de-watered properly. I work with a lot of contractors, quality contractors. Should have been de-watered way ahead of time before this was started. And when they were putting pipes in, the road was collapsing.
I understand what you're saying, but we're getting off, we're getting off topic of what this meeting is for.
I'm just alerting you to the fact that there is a problem with gas now because they violated the no go zone. They had a clear shot on the other side all the way. And instead, when they got close to two main properties, they shipped it over and went on top of the gas lines. Which was one of the reasonings that the engineer had given not to move it up the street, which was only one gas line. And it was further away from the proposed lift station. So now the town is going to inherit this problem. And I want these people to know, if they hook up and it fails or if we have a problem, there's two gas lines here. There's an ignition source right above it. It was the wrong place to put it. But I, I just want to get that out. This meeting because our select board has changed.
Yeah, anybody else have any other items that of this project that they want to put on the list? Okay, so uh, we will get back to the engineer and try to see if we can get a resolution. But I believe we're not making payment until these get rejected. I'm not proposing any.
Is there a bond on this job? That, that guarantees it's going to work. And who has bond? Engineers or the contractors?
I know they have bonded on the job.
So if it fails, whose responsibility? Would it be the contractor or would it be?
I don't want to answer that question because I don't know.
Now, if you're having a lot of experience in live problems of the board.
I know that there was a bond on this project.
Yeah, who declares this project a failure?
And I think the bond was against the contractor engineer that he completed it.
Okay, so the engineer would be responsible. Yeah.
Well, the engineer is.
Okay, so they're bonded for this.
In charge of everything, so.
Okay.
I, I'm guessing, but I'm not a legal or a lawyer to tell you yes or no to your answer.
Yeah, I just see a lot of problems coming. I, I didn't want to bring it up. It is a reality. This should have never happened. None of this. Yeah.
Hey, I guess that's it for this thing. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.
No, it's just like, nothing. The guy did not know, no.
That's shit. That was, I was at the station where I said, open. Keeps people in the mixer. They're going to require noise and she was like, probably has some.
Yeah.
If they're going to move it, it's going to make more noise than.
It's on both right now, but there was some other. We'll see.
Oh yeah, because I thought it was good idea and I thought all the other things that you're trying to feel like that was the least in the asshole.
That was my opinion too.
Okay, we got, we got to move along here.
Have a good night.
I think that we have time to go back.
We certainly can't. Yeah, I think, I think we've got enough time to start this, alright? So I wanted to offer some time as we talked about in our, our last meeting a few years ago. A lot of time, um, echoes, we can hear you pretty uh. Yeah, those sound kind of loud surround. Um, the last meeting, you talked about how uh, sometimes the board's schedule retreats or other things to try to look at some goals for the year. And our preference was to see if we could dedicate some time during your next meetings, especially the summer in the intent that you were shorter anyway. We're actually making pretty good progress here tonight. Um, just to identify some things that you want me and us as a board to be working on over the next year. So I wanted to give you the opportunity to say in order to some projects or permissions, things that you're on your mind. Uh, that we want to try to work on over the next uh, year.
Okay, so I, I think I might have some time on my cloud.
Yeah, yes. I think, no, I think it would be good if we, and this was actually one of the things that I took out of the. Select portrait here that I went to, I went to Devon's was that. Uh, it'd be good for each of us to come up with some goals that are uh, you know, on the board side and also. you know, on the board's side, and also as a, something you work with. So.
I mean, I, as far as the town itself, it's been like extending that water all day, trying to bring in the business and and now maybe to part with and some of the bigger stuff. What, I see the goals, but we're waiting on three reports right now, which is the drinking water, the sewage, and, right, so we should set goals without those three reports, or we could set our goals without those reports.
And those will give you specifics for items that we need to provide for future capital plans and think about implementation. They'll give you, you know, what our assets look like for drinking water, sewer, and stormwater. And stormwater will also work nicely with the work we need to do in the support regulations, which I know is a priority mine to make sure that we're advancing that project. The engineer will be working on, well, we have funding in order to support the engineer on that project.
I'm off for having goals. So I'm just saying, maybe we should wait for those three reports. Or are you ready to provide some goals at this time?
I'm, I think it's something that we should do before the fall, throughout the summer.
I think you do a little of both. I think one of your goals can be to implement on what we learned from the asset manager. And that can change your prioritization.
One of the goals should be the culprit, because that one, that's a realistic goal. I mean, there's, there's long-term goals, and then there's goals that we could possibly accomplish. But the culprits might be a realistic possible, that was.
That was one of mine that this time's.
I'm curious, did you have preliminary lists? Did you have something already in your mind?
Uh, just, you know, since being in conservation as well, the ditch has been such a hot topic. There's so many of them in town that used to be agricultural, and now there's houses there, and it falls under different parts of the the Wilderness Protection Act. So trying to find a way to navigate that. We've been talking about it extensively on the Conservation Commission side of stuff. I think we've made some headway and moving in a good direction, so. Yeah.
You did put in for a municipal sustainability plan for that, which was really cool, so.
Right, so there's, they're gonna, the hope is that they're gonna, we teamed up with Hadley for that grant, and all the agricultural ditches are going to be mapped. We're trying to see if we can get a quote from DPC, since they're already in town doing all of the drainage inspections and stuff. If we could consider the, the private ditches that are part of technically the drainage network, if that would be considered part of their, their mapping that we could do, and we can tie it in with some of that on day. And if not, what would be the revenue source to be able to do that? So that's kind of what we're working on on our end. And then once we have those reports, the town would be able to ideally apply for a grant or come up with, I don't know if it would be a bylaw, but a guideline that the Conservation and DEP would sign off on, giving like, you know, like a three-year window or something like that, where, you know, prioritize the ditches in different colors, so like the red ones are the bad ones, yellow green, and try to work through them that way and kind of get this back under control, and then establish a tangible.
I like, I mean, talking about another call was, since I got on board some years ago, it's always been electronic IP being.
Yeah, yeah.
I've been hoping for that too.
That was also on my list.
That would save probably two and a half days in the process of doing additional paperwork. But I know we're working on that.
We have a couple options we can go over there. We have some departments that are ready to start.
And the other item that's been going on now for a while is our department ambulance. Trying to see if we can do more coverage, or what other options we might have coming up. That's, I expect it to be another type of thing, and it's also planning, that's a couple of big projects. So if we take a little bit from each group, maybe, and then put together.
Yeah, I mean, we, we're also fortunate that we have the new comprehensive plan in too, so, you know, kind of looking at that and using that as a guideline, and what, what things within the next year, 18 months, can we, can we accomplish two or three of those, like, so it would be good.
Because I don't see the next couple of years moving all the buildings up.
No, no.
But I could be down the road there.
But if there's some small ones that we can do, it'd be good to get some accomplished, because this master plan, I think there's one really important.
Really?
Yeah.
We have our first meeting of the Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee, which maybe our first goal should be to talk with a, I mean, something, something faster. Say, "Catal 2040" might, might be fine. But they'll meet tomorrow night, the first time, so Greg will see your, we'll get some, like, maybe, we'll be there. So, myself and a couple of us.
I guess we can start making a list of the items.
Yeah, we'll keep this on the agenda for next meeting.
So each of us, you'll have to develop, help us to develop a list that we can go from.
Now that we got the conversation going, and our minds are like, yeah, probably put something together for next meeting. Okay, Finance, you got anybody else coming, or do I have to wait until 6:30? You want to go now, I guess? Can we go real quick?
Very well, at least. Here are pictures of summer.
Hi, John, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
There's a certain level of cooling effect just there.
There is. Okay, topic is budget shortfall, so we're having our joint meeting with Finance to approve year-end and past year's. I guess we were just given this list, and you guys have, you guys have initiated this list.
This came from our accounts, so everyone seeing this for the first time, I actually was aware. A couple of things on here, but some of them were surprises to me, but they did a good job of this, and I'm happy to do some background. I know, can you call, can you order, here's a, here's a, from Greg.
So, Daryl's probably, since Daryl's not here.
Sure.
Well, you know. Okay, Daryl, yeah, sorry. So, call me to order a 630.
So, what I would say first of all is that we're in very good shape with our budget. We're, we're going to have much more in surplus. This list is really just individual accounts where we're short, but we have much more accounts that are in surplus here. A couple that will end up with probably tens of thousands of dollars left, you know, which I ended the budgeting for them slightly for next year, so we don't end up with quite so much surplus. I think we're going to end up with a pretty good place. But some of them are ones where it makes sense to have a cushion just in case. One of those is the tractor period to the insurance line, where we don't know if people are going to kind of join and be benefited throughout the year, so it's good to have that extra cushion for the future. But I'll just go through the lines if that works for everybody, and just kind of give them the story of why, if they're tiny amounts, we probably won't dwell on them for long. So the first one, town administrator's salary, the recommendation we have is to move money from Finance to the reserve fund. That reserve fund's at $40,000, so we'll still have $6,000 left should anything else come up. Town administrator's salary, we have two town administrators for the six-week period this year. And my salary is mostly just what needs to be covered by this. So it becomes the overlap, and then my rate being a little higher from the last administrator that created this deficit. So that's the recommendation from the reserve fund. So operating this website, that's $500. We can have an extra license to, extra period of maintenance costs, we have 13 this year instead of 12, just to catch up on the previous year. Special Services Building Commission, this is just a slight salary being off because of the number of pay periods. And that's just a thousand dollars that's fixed for, for next year. And that we would take from the dues and memberships line from the Special Services, which was not used in this entire $2,000 surplus there. Highway Other Expenses, that's partially just a budgeting issue that we haven't really had exactly the right number left there. It's also an issue with the lines below motor pool vehicle maintenance. I think it's very high costs for motor pool vehicle maintenance this year. And when we expended that line of motor vehicle maintenance, we sometimes spent from the Highway Other Expenses line, which there were some expenses which could have gone to either account, so those were both over expended. We have the funds this year from the DPW Director's Salary to easily make up for that on the Highway Other Expenses and Motor Pool Vehicle line, but we've increased the motor pool vehicle maintenance line for next year, and we also, I think, vote for Highway Other Expenses and motor pool vehicle maintenance. We'll need to take a look at the spending there, trying to look at some ways to bring it down in the future. I think there's a lot being spent on maintenance and some other expenses that we can better control. I think that's something the DPW Director can help us with. So for the transfers right now, we'll take some from the Highway, from DPW Director's Salary, and then we have a surplus in town building supplies, so $2,000 from that to motor pool vehicle maintenance. Let me pause for a moment, because I just went through about half this list, and see if anyone has any questions before we keep going. Great. Transfer Station Wages, this wasn't budgeted properly last year, and we significantly increased the budget for that for next year. We have two part-time folks who were staffing that. I'm not sure why it was under budgeted for this year. I think it's been kind of something that's historically been under budgeted, but we did add around $10,000 to that line for next year, and we approved budget, so we should be fine in the future. But we'll budget, we'll, we'll balance that this year with the Transfer Station Recycling and Hauling Line, which is frankly over budgeted, so we'll have a surplus there still, even after this transfer. The Animal Inspector was kind of surprised to me. It looks like the styrene that they receive is higher than the budget amount that that was down here for this year. And I don't know how that happened. The styrene rate was agreed upon but not budgeted, so we'd like to balance that because the Town Life Fuel line, which was over budgeted for this year, but we need to figure out how that, how that happened. First, $200 is just not going to be too much. Veterans Benefits is just one of those lines that's hard to predict. It's based on the year before, and how many veterans end up receiving benefits from us, which is supplemented by the state, supplemented by local. But that's just a line that, yeah, you can't fully predict what it's going to be. We did budget for a higher for next year. So that should be less for that for next year. Fire, Tanker, Truck Debt Interest, that just came from a debt calculation issue that we had last year. I believe it's been resolved for next year, but we're just $2,500 off. As I mentioned, we have that surplus in Chapter 30 to be insurance, so we'll report it from there. This one, this is quite alarming, 30 cents that we need to pay for the National Council of Governments assessment. I think that's actually our Pioneer Valley Planning Commission assessment, so we need to change that that line since we're in the National Council of Governments. We'll take that from the creation expenses. I'm not going to say anymore about that 30 cents. And then the employer, the employer portion of federal Medicare, again, that's, that one's often kind of a moving target. We're under on that one, but we're way over for 30 to be insurance, so I believe it's out of the wash. Any concerns from, or questions for finance or something?
That makes sense. I mean, it all makes sense that if you're over on employer portion of federal Medicare, it's maybe like.
Yeah, right, it's supposed to make it tighter, and then, yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Do you have any questions? No, there's just, there's nothing wrong with moving a line from the hauling line, which would be an expenditure, right, to a wage line.
Well, that's why we need your approval. So during, during the year, you know.
As long as it's not over.
Exactly, like, if you have two salaries in the same department, and one's over, one's under, you can just balance that. That would, approval of the finance committee's like, oh, but to make these interdepartmental changes and these across line changes, we do need approval.
So limitation is on the amount to move versus the size of the original line? Okay, that would be where the limit would come. You can't, you could only move a certain amount, right?
I don't think there's a limit on the amount. I think it's just about whether it's expense versus salary, and then across departments.
Yeah, I'll have to check, but there always has been a limit in terms of like, if you had $100,000, you know, you can't take the whole.
Right, you can only move 20,000.
Right.
I'll try to.
I mean, they reform, I mean, obviously a long time ago, you couldn't do any of this. You had to go back to town. So they reform that to allow, and then they changed it at some point like 35 years ago or something. I don't know. I'm sure none of that.
Yeah, that was the only thing that stuck out to me, that we were moving from an expenditure to salary.
Yeah, yeah, right, because otherwise you're right. Internally, the department could do, you know what I mean? Like, you were just, you were short in one expense line, go over to another expense line.
And that's kind of what's happened here, say, for like, Inspection Services and Building Commission line is also an inspector line. We left some of the inspector line. Some of it's been transferred to the Special Service Building Commission line, just to balance that, a lot of it left because.
And actually, I don't even think that we actually did move this way, that we have to separate expenses from salaries, really? In the budget, we really have to do that.
I was always under the impression that you could just fund salary from expenditure.
Well, yes, yes, because we have two different lines that are providing, right. But if a town meeting, you just voted on, you know, one big fire department, highway department, police department, that's one thing that I think you could, you know, my point, because we separate them out when we vote on them.
Which is a matter of, that's a practice of good budgeting. That's a good thing to be doing. For transparency and for accountability. All right. Thanks, sir. I guess we've got motions from each body, then.
I'll make a motion to approve the FY '25 budget deficits and transfer funds as reported and recommended by the county.
So, much better, more seconded. Any meeting just going to.
I'll make a motion to accept the end of the year budget transfers as recommended by the county.
Second motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we just need this I want, right?
Yep. I did update, yeah, I did update the slight more earlier. We're getting recommendations on the farm sewer rates for July 8th, and then we'll schedule a public meeting for July 15th, their next select board meeting. This finance committee typically, none of those rates, this is select board, yeah. And then one person on finance committee, or as many of you who want to join, join, this one person should be there for the preparation. It'll be 9:00 AM virtual meeting on, like.
Okay, I'm going to be gone, but other people say.
Yeah, Daryl's.
Great. I'll send you both the info. You both join, just, once you speak, or, okay, we can remember by the end of. I think whenever you're ready, I'll try.
Motion to adjourn.
Did you have a second on that?
A second on motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All in favor? All right, we're done. Get thrown away.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, bud.
Bye.
All right, yeah. J S, need to go now.
Yes, yeah.
Thanks for calling.
Will we have any unfinished business that we can talk to the, uh? Officer, the last gentleman last checked with their ears set in twenty-one eighty-two, to conduct strategy discussions and preparation for the negotiation. We're not using personal, we're to conduct part of our conference, the contract negotiations. While not using personal, D W W director contract, uh, need.
I'll make a motion to.
And we will not be coming back into open session.
We'll see that.
So now we can move into a second.